We'll begin with the invocation given by Chief Testerman.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together in a service of our duty. Grant wisdom in our discussions, fairness in our decisions. Bless those who lead, those who serve, those who protect this town. Everything we do today, we got and take from certain, and in your name, Jesus, your name we pray.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remove your covering if you have one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, welcome the folks at home. We do know that there is some Comcast activity in the area, so for everyone viewing from home tonight, we hope that the Internet doesn't go down, but it will restore and upload is what I'm told if we do have that problem. Hopefully, they've got the issue corrected. We need to have a roll call. I see that all members are present except for Councilwoman Jennings. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
We will need a motion for the approval of the minutes of August 4th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? None being heard, all in favor? It is unanimous. We need the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
I think that we may need to make an amendment to the agenda.
Yes, okay, is there a discussion about the agenda?
I'd like to add to the agenda a A1 personnel to close session.
A1 personnel added to closed session? Okay. Is there any further discussion of that? Then would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as stated with the addition of a closed session discussing personnel.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor? The agenda is set. We are going to move things around just a little bit tonight so that some of our law enforcement can get back to duty and things that they need to do in case there is an emergency. So, without further ado, if Frank Farmer and Deborah would enter the room, it is time for their presentation. Oh, they're in the room. So many people in here, though. All right, Frank, and the floor is yours.
It's been like five years ago I've done this. I just went on Facebook and I put a thing out and said, you know, y'all nominate the officers that you would like to see receive the thin blue line flags. We gave those away, everybody liked them. I was thinking here a couple of weeks back about Hunter, and I spoke with Chip and Avery and several other people in the community, Mr. Testerman, and they all said it was a great idea. So we done a giveaway on Facebook, we have those names, and we're going to give about 10 of them. We also have one here for Shutter Chick Shuler to put up. It's just got engraved on the front of it, some gave all. And we sure did. We have to thank our police officers, y'all do a great job. Okay. Aaron Smith. Okay, we'll just set them aside for the, okay? Who do you have here?
We have Lieutenant Billings.
Mr. Billings? You can sit forward here, we'll... Who else could you have here? We have the rest of these, and I'll leave them with Kevin, and he can give them to those gentlemen, okay? We thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I believe that that concludes Mr. Farmer's presentation of the blue line flags. And I want to say a big note of appreciation to him for doing that and for supporting our law enforcement officers. So if, I believe we can proceed. Do we agree? Okay. We have, now under public presentations, we have Bill Huber.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Some time ago, it was last year actually, that this council saw something about this possibility. In fact, you received some land between River Street and the middle fork of the Holston River as a gift maybe two years ago. And with the idea of it becoming an extension of the River Walk. And so I've got a presentation to show you, to give you an update on what's being thought about, what's been done, and what the town council is being asked to do in connection with that. So I don't think we need to use this graphic, but you have this letter that I wrote to the town manager.
Yeah, I had all that in my bag.
Yeah, a couple of months ago, where I sort of described what has happened so far. I've gotten a lot of input from a lot of different people about this, but the most important input came from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And Corey Knuckle from the Abbotin office of that agency came up and looked at the property and had a lot of good ideas about how to create a riparian barrier, which is basically a filter for water that comes into the stream from the stream bank. And it's a natural way of purifying the water so that the fish habitat is good. And Corey came up with a planting plan, and I don't have that with me today. He's actually on extended leave until August 25th, so I won't be able to give that to you today. But what he was offering last year was to actually do the planting with his agency of trees and shrubs and wildflowers in that 900-foot section of the river. And this is, can we go to some photographs so I can show you where we're talking about? The first one I'd want to show them is from the bridge.
I can put these in any order, so...
Yeah, okay, we'll just have to pick and choose. I can use them as they come up, okay. I'll just take the slides in order of the way they come up on the screen, and we can talk about them. The other entity that's been involved is the Boy Scouts. We're not able to do this screen, too, apparently?
This is no work.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay, except for these guys. So, shucks, what's his first name? His last name is Ham, and he's a Boy Scout in the local Boy Scout troop, and he's doing his Eagle project here. And one piece of that is this kiosk, which is finished now, just got finished about two weeks ago. And that will have display surfaces on both sides. This is 30 feet off of the River Street. And that area, that unpaved or that paved area you're seeing in the front is actually the slab of one of the original Lincoln Industries buildings that were on this site. And so there's a double purpose in this site, in my mind. That is to provide an extension of the River Walk so that folks can come on down from where it ends now on the other side of Church Street. And also, the Boy Scouts wanted to be able to get to the stream. And so there's a location just 30 feet west of that kiosk where they're building a set of steps down from this elevation down to the bottom, right on the upstream side of the old dam that crossed the river at that location. So that will give a way for waders to get to the stream for fishing. It's a good fishing area, it's kind of low water, it's nice and wide and low at that point. And I see people fishing in the stream all the time with waders. You can fish on the bank as well. So that will have, Mattie Austin, who's just graduated from Marion Senior High School, worked on this project for a lot of months, like six or eight months, consulting primarily with me and with Betsy Sawyers, whose great-grandparents and great-great-grandparents opened these factories back in the 1800s in developing a pictorial history, industrial history of the site. And that's what would go on this board right here. So it'd be a permanent display, approximately five feet by four feet, that shows a map of what it looked like in 1920 and has a history of the industries that were developed there as well as the people that did it. And that's what would go on this side of the kiosk. And on the other side, Corey has a nice graphic that shows how plants can filter runoff before it gets to a stream. And that'll be an educational component of the kiosk. The scouts, go to the next slide if you... Okay, this is a look toward Church Street, a look at River Street. And one piece that I would like to see the town do is to sort of clean up and make more appealing the parking, the parallel parking that happens along there naturally right now. You can see the berm is wide, the street is wide for that matter. So I think that if you just did some striping and a little bit of additional pavement on the berm of the street at that point, you could get about nine parallel parking spaces along River Street there. And this would become the upstream terminus of the River Walk for now. Okay, next slide, please. Next photograph. All right, let me see, oh yeah, okay. That, it's hard to see it, but that's the dam. And that big rock that you're seeing in the lower left-hand corner is the end of the dam. And just to give you a brief history of what was on this site, there was a mill pond here, and that dam went all the way across the middle fork. It was probably about 150 feet long, and the water depth at the time it was in use was somewhere around 12 feet at the dam. And the water came into a tunnel under the building that's just to the left of this picture, and went down under the building into a turbine that made electricity. There's, if you want to see one, there's a couple of them still in place at the Ree Creek Mill on the south side of Withville. And they provided electricity to Withville before Appalachian Power came to town. So it was probably something like three feet in diameter. It's long gone, but the corner of that building, as well as the other three corners of that building, are still there. The foundations of the building that was on this site are still there. And so part of my thinking is that we maintain that site enough to be able to spot those. And I'd like to put like a four-by-four post on each corner. And the graphic that I described on the kiosk would be numbered so that you could say, well, this is corner number four, this is corner number three. And you could envision how the building, how the site was used for industrial purpose, even though it's not there anymore, except for its foundations. And so my thinking is the building was, the riverside of the building actually was very close to the bank. And so the River Walk could go between the top of the bank and the edge of the foundation. So that would be the positioning of the River Walk along that area. And then it would just continue along the top of the bank up to the end of the property, which is, like I said, about 900 feet from the bridge. Okay, let's look at the next slide. I think it's going to show upstream look at the river. I just wanted to give you some sense, because frankly, if I, oh no, that, okay. This is the other piece of what the scouts did. They built this bench, and it overlooks the prettiest part of the river right there. And it's real close to where you go down to the fishing spots, close to the dam. So they worked on it. You're probably familiar with how Eagle Scout projects work, and the whole troop was involved. And they're not finished yet, because they still need to do the steps down to the river. But they're working hard on it. Can you go to the next photograph? That's all you have?
I can see it, y'all.
Okay.
I can go back to the agenda, I think I've got, I think I finally got a copy of your signed to print.
Okay, okay, well, anything else you can pull up would be helpful.
That didn't read very well.
Yeah, it's pretty washed out. But this gives you some idea of what we're talking about. I've actually changed my mind about where I think the best routing of the trail would be from this photograph. But that little hill you can see in the lower left-hand corner, there's two walls of the old factory. And the other two walls are there as well. And I'm thinking that the trail would come down on the outside of that hill, and then go up along the top of the bank, all the way out to the end. Where you see that little lake coming out about halfway up, that's where the kiosk is located. And the lake going up to the left is the dam. So the path would go down to the dam. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, the concept of the project. What the town would, I think, want to do, I hope it want to do, is to establish the trail itself, the path. I think in the past, you've used tailings from milling of the streets to create the surface for the path on the River Walk. And I understand from Billy that there's some of that available, so I think it's just a matter of placing the materials and doing a little bit of grading to make that path continuous from the intersection of Church Street and River Street down to the end of the property or somewhere down that way. It wouldn't, you know, the eventual thinking for the River Walk is that it would extend all the way up through town and maybe even connect to the part that was the original River Walk up on Campbell Avenue. But for now, it could just come back onto Church Street at the end of this property. So the logistics of this, I think, need to be worked out by some ad hoc committee of the town council in terms of how the town interfaces with fish and wildlife and when the project is done. Last year, when this was being conceived, the idea was that the ground would be de-vegetated in the fall so that it was ready in the spring for its new plantings. I think that's the schedule that probably should be followed for this year as well. And so as soon as I can get a hold of Corey Knuckle, I know it's a funny name, but his mom and dad gave it to him, so I can't change it. We'll be able to pin that down. But as far as I know, the resources are still in place with the fish and wildlife folks to be able to do this for the town. And I think it would be a great addition to the River Walk. Just one corollary to that, that we've been talking about, I say "we" as folks that are interested in this project, none of whom are in the room probably right now. But the River Walk, if you've been on it, you know that it's upstream terminus, has a lot of steps that come up from the river to the parking lot up near the top of Church Street. And most people don't do that. They actually park in the Civitan parking lot and cross the railroad tracks to get to the River Walk. And there's a chain link fence there, but it's got a big hole in it. So folks, that's the way they go. And so what several of us who have looked at it have said is that if we could figure out a way to get from the bottom of those steps under the railroad bridge over into the Civitan Park, that would be a much better way to run the River Walk. It would keep folks near the river, and it would keep them off the railroad tracks. And it would bring them out at the entrance to the Civitan Park at the lower end of Church Street. So you'd have a much better connection to the rest of this River Walk, because you'd just have to cross the bridge, cross Church Street, and you'd be on the other 900 feet of it. So you'd actually pick up all that distance around the, under the bridge and through the Civitan Park, plus this. So it would probably add something like 2,000 feet to the River Walk. So that's the big idea. I hope the town council sees fit to pursue it. Questions?
Does this need to go to the Rec. Department?
Recreation.
Part of Public Works.
I think that would probably be proper for it to go to the Recreation Committee and work with Public Works. And I don't know, I mean, you're the engineer, so do we need estimates on cost projections and things like that? Or do you have any of those?
Well, I don't. But I think that the folks that maintain the River Walk for the town would probably be able to give you a pretty good idea. I really don't think it's going to be a lot of expense for the town to put in that path. It's just a matter of getting a small piece of earth moving equipment in there. There's actually one sitting on my property right now, but it doesn't belong with the town. And smooth it out in the area where the path would go and put down, you know, something typical, the width of the River Walk, which is four to five feet of Millings.
Is there any permits that need to be pulled on that?
There might be erosion and sediment control... There might be an erosion and sediment control permit necessitated.
Okay.
Depends on how many square feet it is.
Fishing game needs to be involved, the gentleman who's talking about.
Say what?
Fishing game.
Right.
Yeah. Be involved with our committee, and his input also.
And they, they will know, of course, their, their primary interest is maintain the quality of the stream, so they're not going to be recommending anything that would, during construction, make that worse. So my guess is that there would be some erosion and sediment control work to be done. But that's pretty inexpensive. Even a silt fence along that 900 feet would not be a big expense.
So, pleasure of council.
Do you want it to go to Rec or Building and Grounds, or both?
Both, fine, whatever the wishes of the majority of the council are. Get as many involved as can, and as much input as we can. I think it's a great idea.
Everybody can weigh in on it, but does it, does it involve the Buildings and Grounds to, to appoint? If, if they're necessary, sure, but...
Well, Recreation could start out, and I guess we could get Buildings and Grounds in on it.
I'll make a motion to refer it to the Recreation Committee.
Yeah.
Second. Okay, a motion and second to refer the project to the Recreation Committee for further evaluation, and working with Fish and Wildlife and looking at the permits that we might need to pull. It'd be nice to get a cost analysis on that, if we can just see what we're going to spend there. Okay. So, any further discussion?
I would just like to encourage you to move fairly quickly on this, because it's season-sensitive.
What would be the best season to do this?
Fall.
Fall.
Yeah, to, to start the project. The, the trail itself could be done in any timeframe, but the, it makes sense to me to go ahead and establish the trail, because everything else will build around it. You know, all the, all the re-vegetating of the site will be around the trail.
Why don't you call us, and we'll meet you down there one day, and just do a, just use your hands on what, what you'd like to see from the town.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Before we have this meeting, so we'll know a little bit more about what we're talking about.
Okay, let's do that as soon as Corey gets back.
I've got a...
Which is next week?
Question from Councilmember Hayes.
Where the homeless are now, where is that in proximity to what you're talking?
For the most part, they're on downstream, probably six or 700 yards downstream. But the, you know, the River Walk is on the, you know, it's on the right side of the stream as you're going downstream, and the homeless population is occupying land on the other side of the river. They're typically getting out of there by walking on the railroad trestle, as I understand it.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. Does that answer your question, or do you have further comments?
Yeah, I think staff, I think...
I'd like to add something. I started this like twice, and got shut down pretty hard. Has that been taken care of? Was a neighbor come down, told us to stop what we were doing?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that's smoothed out?
Yeah.
I just want to ask you.
Okay. Thank you for inviting us, Tony.
And I believe, council, are you good? Any, any question you want to ask is, is okay. There's no bad questions, now's the time.
Later.
Okay. Later, it will be motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll send it to the Recreation Committee, all in favor. Okay.
I, I think I made it clear in describing the vegetation, but the, you know, the original thought that I had in my mind was, you know, the typical grass where you can play frisbee and have picnic tables, and that's not what this is being conceived to be now. It's more of a natural setting, which is more consistent with the intent of the River Walk. So, it'd still be pretty.
Thank you for your concept and your presentation. Okay, moving along. Are we good to move along, folks? Yes. Yeah. Okay, we have public comment time, and I'm going to preface public comment time with a few rules that we would like to see everybody, or not rules, guidelines, basically. Of course, as normally, you would approach the podium, give us your name and address. And public comment time is not to debate issues, but it's to express your personal opinions on the topics related to the operations specific to the Town of Marion. The time limit is three to five minutes, and of course, you will be alerted when your time is about up, and hopefully you can promptly conclude your remarks. We need everyone to keep the remarks civil and respectful, and use the proper decorum. Reframe from the use of any profane or obscene comments or gestures. Any speaker that doesn't abide by these restrictions may be ruled out of order and asked to conclude their comments. And the town council members and employees of the Town of Marion respect the opinions of the citizens, and would ask the same level of respect to be shown during the meeting. And I think those guidelines might help us all to get through public comments and understand each other better. So, that being said, the first person that we have for public comments is Mr. Huff.
Thank you. First thing I wanted to mention is, y'all gave away flags a while ago.
Yes, could you give us your name and address?
Huff, but y'all gave away flags just now, and if you look up at Flag Code, Section G, it says, "No line shall be placed upon the flag." It's the same as burning the flag. So any blue line flags you have in a public office or vehicles need to be removed. It's also known as a gang, gang flag. But the reason I came to Marion is to spread this video across all the counties around here about what you're doing. Somebody told me on the 24th, y'all are going to send in the SS Stormtroopers to throw away the homeless's things, look what little they have, and chase them away. Now, they're on public land. Y'all might sit in your comfy little houses and work for two or three years to shove these people aside and forget about them. I did a video where one of your police officers stopped a mother, father, and a daughter. Didn't help them in any way, just gave them a hard time. And nothing has changed. How do y'all feel about throwing away the little? They may have a jar. It means everything to them. It's nothing to y'all. Throw it in the trash, chase them away, don't let anybody see them. As long as they're hidden, they're not here, right? So if y'all want to chase them away on the 24th, I would like for y'all to tell me the day you're going to do it, and the time you're going to do it, so I could be down there to show the world how Marion treats the homeless. It's a, it's a shame. You're talking about throwing them away, what are you doing to help them? Is there anything? Is there anything y'all do to help them? They don't want to be in that place. There could be a father down there that lost his whole family in a car wreck. He's giving up. But y'all want to prey on the weak, just like the police officers do. They prey on the weak. And you go to court, and it's the same thing. The cop might say something, it's a lie, you're guilty. And y'all are guilty of what you're doing to the homeless. Every single one of you. I'd like for y'all to spend just two days out there trying to make it, and then have somebody come over, take maybe a shirt, the only shirt you have, and throw it in the trash, and tell them to go hide in the woods, nobody will see them. Talking about this trail, is 600 yards too close to have a homeless person? Ms. Hayes, you brought it up. 600 yards, people still see them? Do they need to be a mile, half mile? What is it? What do you want? Nothing? Just forget about them. But I'm requesting that y'all tell me what day, what time. I want to be there to video it, to show everybody how y'all are, all of you. That's it.
I would not advise it. Thank you for your remarks, and I'm not aware of any plans that you're speaking of, but we will have our next speaker, who is going to be Sarah Taylor. And if you'd...
Sarah Taylor, City Attorney, East Corner. I've got some papers here, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be reading from some of them, because I want to make sure that I bring the right things out to the council. I have with me some emails, I have some exchanges between the town, and it's about the FOIA policy, Freedom of Information. From what I saw up to yesterday, the Town of Marion does not have anything published on their website about guidelines for fees, charges, this type of thing. If you look on the courthouse, the sheriff's office, Smith County, they have this all published, and I think it's been there for a while. So my experience with my personal request was being met with what I would consider to be an inflated fee, and that was designed to discourage me from further pursuit of that request. But then I run up on another one, and it quickly became apparent that this was a recurring thing. And this other one, you know, you guys had a request that, for some video that was from another citizen, and it ended up being broken down to a total of $508.66 for production of video files off the town's GoPros that they wore on private property during an abatement. And that is just copying from one device to another. That's not the six hours that it was broke down to be. I don't know why that would be the case. It was said that it was unredacted, according to the email that I'm looking at. And then I have another one here, and it says, I'm going to read this in part, being mindful of privacy and things like that, but it says, "The information requested in your emails will be provided to you upon your payment of $508.66. You need to make the payment to Cindy Stanley, Town Clerk. If you no longer want the information due to the cost, please advise the same." Now, I, I think that that's a lot of money, and I think that it kind of focuses on people who may be disadvantaged or cannot afford it, and it's designed to be a deterrent. But this information nonetheless is needed, and I wouldn't want somebody to do this to me. I wouldn't want somebody to do this to my neighbors, but unfortunately, it happens. So I have brought with me today a cashier's check in the amount of $508.66. And it is for the request, and I will not name the person, but you know who it is. You can talk to Mr. Fennick about that. And I would like for, Chief Testerman? Could you pass this around the council and let them see it? And I would like for it to end up with Ms. Stanley, and for her to verify the amount. And I will draw your attention to the memo on the bottom. Now, while you pass that check around, I would like for everybody to know that this check was from donations, from people within the Town of Marion and a few outside of Marion, because they have seen what happens. And they have expressed some concerns about information and transparency. And I, I agree, I think there's a problem with it. Now, we had some overage. We collected this money in 48 hours. We had some overage for that, and we are going to apply the money to replace some of the food that was taken in that process. So that is, that is all that I have right now. But I would also like to request that you promptly provide that person with the information they've requested. And I will follow up to make sure it was provided. And Ms. Stanley, can you verify the check that you've received it?
It's $508.66.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope that that information is given to you in a very timely fashion. We'll, we'll get that out immediately if, if we can. The next person that we have is J.S. Staley.
My name is J.S. Staley, and I've lived in Marion for a considerable period of time. It's always good to be able to follow Mr. Huber, because that way you can avoid the BS he has spread. I'm here to simply say, the clock's still ticking. On my being here, my paying attention, September is gone. When September is gone, there needs to be some action on the part of this body to address some of the problems that have been brought to your attention over the last five months. Okay? I just hope that you will address it in a fair manner to everybody concerned. A lot of neighborhoods, neighborhood individuals have known nothing about what's transpired. I have yet to hear any explanation from the Health Department about the Middle Fork of the Hudson River being turned into an open sewer. And that's certainly what it is, as it flows right now. Where Mr., where Mr. Huber got his endorsement from Fish and Game is beyond me. I'd like to get the names of people on Fish and Game, so I can talk to them about the real life. Also, if you're going to undertake this project, Mr. Huber's, I want to have an environmental impact. You're going to burn the foliage down this fall. A pre-environmental impact statement, as to the impact on, and a post in the spring, environmental impact statement. I think it's important that you pay close attention to this. Time's coming when the, the explanation for everybody's going to be, "Oh, it's cold outside, we can't turn these people out into cold." You're right, that's why some action needs to be taken right now. It has, it has to be undertaken now, and you have to decide what you're going to do and how you're going to go about. I hope you will get off your ducks and undertake the endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Staley. Our next speaker will be Bill Stamper.
Bill Stamper, 659 Spruce. So, I would just like to play a recording and go from there. Give me one second, this phone.
Yes. My concern, just so for the committee knows, the people that we have a problem with trash, these trash cans are not going to solve their problems. We're not going to take care of them. Probably still not going to put trash in the trash can, they're going to steal the trash cans, we're never going to bring the trash cans back. It's just, I don't think that's, my personal opinion, that's going to solve a lot of our problems. But, that's all.
Okay.
And the overall tenor of our audience anymore in the last... Has been reward. Well, I'd probably give it, I'd probably give it. But I'm just saying, during the solidarity integrity...
Oh, my God.
You're, you know what? You're online. So, motion and second, all in favor of sending it to committee.
So anyway, with that being said, of course, that wasn't us speaking, that was y'all speaking. Now that we know how y'all really feel about us, your integrity, sir, you don't have integrity. You don't even know the word integrity. I saw five of y'all laughing whenever, whenever everybody was making fun of the town for stealing trash cans and the integrity. I saw five of you laughing, so I brought you something, that way that y'all would know that we thank you for how you really feel about us. Chief, if you'll bring those in here, please. Yeah, right there. I got all five of you a balloon that says, "Your number one." I need you to give one to Carter.
I'll have it back here in the back.
Okay. Okay. One to Carter, one to, uh, Atwell, one to Ms. Jennings, of course, she's not here, one to Spencer, one to Gates. The rest of y'all, y'all were doing a great job. I never once, I've watched that video 100 times, you've got integrity. You've got integrity. You never laughed, you never smiled, you never talked bad, but the rest of them did. I don't know if y'all saw it, but everybody in Smith County did, everybody in Marion. So if you want to talk about integrity, you don't have any. You never have.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Stamper.
You're welcome.
The next speaker we have is David Fulton. David, all right.
David Fulton, Pearl Avenue. I've been to Walmart twice in the past two months to pay the town water bill. I am informed you cannot pay the town water bill at Walmart. I was just wondering why, when you can pay Appalachian, cable, phone company, but you cannot pay the Town of Marion water bill at Walmart. Secondly, I spoke with Mr. Gates this week and Mrs. Jennings, and I will inform the rest of you, due to the video, the last town meeting, they've been, two families notified me that if the town council disrespected the mayor, as you did, how do you respect the people of the town? And two of the family will not buy homes here in Marion. And that is due to the comment and action of the town council two weeks ago. Thank you.
Mr. Fulton, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Charles Hayden.
My name's Charles Hayden, 726 South Cher Street, and I want to thank Billy. He more or less made it clear what I intended to speak about, so I can move on to something else. One of the things is Freedom of Information Act. 2013, it clearly says that you're supposed to have a written policy in place, noting current fee charges. Each public body may set its own policy within the cost limits under Freedom of Information Act. You do not have that policy. And it said "public body." It did not say, "For your request, officers decide how much to charge somebody." My contention is, and all the areas around the county, the court, all of them has a policy in place. Whipple's got it. They're all around, but not Marion. Now, why are you sitting on your position you're in and turning it all over to one man when he's not on council? And it says here, "The public body is to set that policy and put it on the website." This is ridiculous, that you turn too much control over to one man. And speaking of turning it over to one man, only farm animal ordinance, he very clearly said that no farm animal could be used as a commercial support. Why beg to differ? Because right here, federal guidelines said, unlike service animals, emotional support animal is not limited to a dog. As many types of animals can be trained as certified emotional support animal, including cats, horses, pigs, even hens. So now are we supposed to take his advice, or are we supposed to take the federal regulations' advice? This is ridiculous. It really is. Same way with the discharge of weapons in Town of Marion. You suddenly decided in your ordinance that you can't bow hunt in town. Well, the state code that he used to justify that says you can't shoot a gun too close to a road, oh, stupid. That had nothing to do with the airsoft guns, had nothing to do with, our rifles, had nothing to do with a buck. So he used a state code to justify whatever they wanted to do. Also says if you do ban no hunting in certain areas, you must have a sign put up around that area for the public to know. Were you banning it in the whole town? Well, that means we need a no-hunting sign on every entrance into this town. So who come up with this? Our lawyer. I think he is totally making up his own rules and talking about integrity. I don't think that's integrity when he tells y'all that the vague justifications for ordinance that you're writing, turns out not to have not a thing in the world to do with it. Now, I do want to add just a little bit. If you do put regulations on hunting, state laws clearly says that you are to notify the game department, put your regulations in free book, and it's gotta be in there by the first amendment of every... Well, guess what? There's several localities that has complied with that, but what? Not Marion. We got no hunting, but it's not complying with the state law. Where is, like everybody else says, where's the integrity? And with what Billy had to say, it was said that we are in sight, y'all's integrity? But when we gave the resolution to the mayor, it was our appreciation of who we thought was doing a good job. Now, I never heard so much blatant disregard for our mayor and the public with those comments and those laughs that happened. I would call for everyone that opened their mouth and thought it was funny to please leave. I would love for that to happen, because we need people here that really respects the public, not try to control us. Thank you.[1101.28][1101.28](Applause).
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Lance Vendolson. Did I get that right, sir? Vendolson?
Vendolson.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to go right to something, but because of some of the things you've said tonight, I've gotta upgrade that. Two meetings ago, my wife and two of my neighbors had come down here. It just has to do with the River Street thing. I thought it was a surprise that that came up. I happen to have the joy of living above the River Walk, where we can open our windows at night so we can have the smoke come in from the fires down there, and we become the walking path for the folks that are camping so nicely down there. I get to go out and pick up the cigarette butts and the junk food wrappers, because on Bluff Street, which is off of North Street, it's, I have a, with the heat we've been having lately, I have a very spoiled corn terrier, and I'll put her in the car and take her for a ride. And we come out around that way, we go down to River Street, and the smoke down there is somewhat, and I open the windows so she can hang out. From where the Boy Scouts are having their, putting in their project there, if you go another 40 yards or so, on the condos across the street, and I guess they're 292 to about 308,000 or whatever, right across from there are the condos. If you go down about 40 yards, I've witnessed what I feel drug transactions, because the people take off so quickly. If you go another 10 yards of the 50, 50-yard line, there's the two completely demolished automobiles off to the side. River Street happens to mean kind of a main thoroughfare for the people that aren't coming up to our properties anymore, which is getting really old, because I don't like 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night, same corn terrier, she starts barking. I go down to one of my three basement doors, and somebody's jiggling the knob. I open the door, and here's a young woman standing there, and I say, "I got a Ruger SP101 in 357. If I drag you into this house, if you made it into this house, you know a young lady could have been killed." She doesn't say a word, she takes off, walking slowly away. And another young lady coming down, and it's like, and this is two weeks. Go, "Whoa, whoa, where are you going?" "Down to the river." "Where are you coming from?" "I don't know." "Okay." My neighbor, who is a, she's still working full-time, but she's in her 70s, a nurse next to me, she says, "Lance, this guy comes into my driveway, and he was mumbling. I asked him what he wanted, he's looking for water." And I said, "Do you say anything else?" She says, "No, but I'm getting afraid." Carolyn, one of the two ladies that spoke two meetings ago, lives oblique from us across the street, she says, "You know that, that truck that stopped in front of my house? Now we got people coming up to the driveway and knocking on the door." And there again, she's afraid. I won't mention the name of another woman down the way. She says, "Somebody coming up North Jones Street in a, in a white pickup truck, he's going airborne." And she's got kids, so that, that isn't too, that isn't too well, too good either. Then just last week, I was here to talk about this last meeting, but you were doing the tree thing, so I didn't want to hold things up, and I took off. But this gentleman's coming up, he goes, "Hey." He's using the footpath. I said, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, wait, wait a minute." I said, "Wh-where are you coming from, what, down there?" "Oh, I know, I know where you're coming from." Said, "Pick up the cigarette butt." And he did that, he was very polite. "Oh, I won't come through here again." I said, "No, you, you shouldn't come through." I said, "We, we're tired for this." And this is all leading up to something. But his name was Justin. He said, "Well, I've got two kids that are under foster care right now." But those two kids are being taken care of by, I guess, a mother-in-law. He's got a wife that's pregnant. Third kid. They live in, where do you live, Justin? "I live in a tent." "Oh, okay, I know where you live." Because in the springtime, before all the leaves come in, we could see way down there where you guys are at. I'll get to the main point now. The reason I came today, I was gonna bring up last time, the BOD program. When Bill Rush was still here, I asked about a long time ago, about abandoned buildings, and the BOD is that blighted, abandoned, underutilized, derelict buildings. And he had voiced, he said, "We've knocked down 12, and we got a whole bunch more on the list." Now that, they had talked to people in both Petersboro and in Marion, and somebody had done an interview from the, from the town to this reporter. And what I was, wanted to get to without the other, with the intro, was what is the town doing with all these abandoned houses and buildings in Marion? We've been here almost seven years now, and they said, "Oh, yeah, those things are gonna be coming down." Well, we haven't seen much progress, and the idea is, is it more compassionate to have pregnant women in a, living in a tent? Or do you find out which of these houses can be, have church folks buy it for back taxes or something, or knock these things down? Because I'll tell you, young couples your age aren't gonna come in here and buy when they see that stuff. And if they're gonna buy those condos for 300 grand so they can watch drug sales going on, it's not gonna work. And we are personally getting sick and tired of the smoke coming into our home and, and people going through our neighborhood, which are, Carolyn's 82, Jane is 74, I'm 75, it's, it's getting old. And so that BOD program, if you don't, I just wanted to know if the progress on that program, or if it's even being done now. And that's what I originally just wanted to ask about that. And I'd appreciate if you could either elaborate it or think about it, or see what's being done with that.
The next EDA meeting.
I appreciate it.
Get his, get his number.
Yes, sir. You might want to go to the next EDA meeting, okay? And I don't know when that's going to be, but if you'll get with someone after this, we'll make sure that you have that information, okay? Can you...
(Inaudible) the first Monday at 12:00 police department. And if you might be able to, let us know, we'll handle this, target aid, that target.
Mr... Okay, so if we can make that happen for him, maybe we can get some more. We now will move along with James Parks. James.
My name's James Parks, 164 Market Street. We have this, I guess it's for drug inhabitants moving in our neighborhood. I'm just surprised at the town council, years ago, you ran next to us into the town, and all the residents up through there was mostly residents, you zoned it commercial. And I was like, wow, you know, Dunkin' Donuts or a motel's gonna buy us all out, destroy this closed Market Street? But y'all put a dang residential right in the middle of all of ours now by allowing this group come in from Whipple or wherever. I'm not sure the name of it, it started out as being Home for Veterans, oh, to make us all feel kind of bad, you know, oh, poor veterans. Well, now it's run by, I guess, Mount Rogers. I don't know who's paying the bills or anything, I have no contacts, I don't think your town has any contacts to these people. I don't know what's going on, but why in the world of all that area, the gateway coming into Marion was all right up y'all's alley, zoned, commercial? Well, let me ask, has anybody been up there? South 16, we've been here three times and talked about it. I know Avery's been up there. Has anybody else stopped by Market Street and looked at the new drug rehab center? Well, it's temporary housing to me, it's a hotel, which is a commercial business. I don't understand. And I think Mount Rogers, we were contacted and said they would be here tonight to explain their end of it. I'm not real sure what's going on, but why in the world would you? It devalued my property, not because you're moving drug addicts back there, because now it's residential, and somebody looks at it all as being commercial, but right in the middle, you guys decided to make it back residential. So I don't know, do we all apply? Is it that easy to flip-flop zoning? I mean, what? I thought y'all had it your way, you had it all zoned, commercial up through there, the whole damn thing. But now you've got a residential right in the middle that some company comes in, it devalued my property, they'll say, "Well, we gotta deal with this now. We'll have to go to town council, we'll have to put it back to residential, we'll have to change it back to commercial." And the way y'all flip-flop, I guess it'd be easy to do, I don't know. I guess, it was mostly houses, though. If you look up the map, and I talked with predecessors, and they said, "Yeah, one day we'll close Market Street." I can see motels up here, Dunkin' Donuts, something, you know, this is right at the interstate, right at the gateway to Marion, and y'all, all of our residents are commercial. But then you let this... But then you let this one guy come in and zone residential. Now what's, did anybody go look at it to see the possibilities of what Marion could have up there? I mean, I, I just don't see, I don't see your effort coming up there. Like I said, Avery's been there. He knows what I'm talking about. My house is beautiful. I don't want it tore down. It used to sit on the corner of Cherry and Iron Street. It was, uh, I think it was the Health Department back in the day and they moved it before they moved the Interstate Bridge. It's oak and built-ins. It's beautiful place. I mean, you know, you just gotta imagine it was built right on the road with these other fine houses. But why in the world, mine's zoned, commercial, and my neighbor's is commercial, and the other neighbors, commercial. Everything's commercials. The buildings, every little house up there, except this guy from Whitfield that y'all allowed to build a drug center. And it's just temporary for housing. It's nothing, they're not gonna live there maybe a week or a month. And I don't know who pays the bills. To me, it's, should've been commercial if it's gonna be a motel-type thing. They don't have a porch. It's staring into a cliff out back. You need to go look at it. If you're not delusional and you own drugs and they put you in this place, you're gonna be a damn delusional. You're gonna be insane back there. The back deck, they won't have a front porch. There's not room for a front porch, I don't think. And they built a two, three-foot walkway out back against the cliff. If a rock don't fall on you, you'll be, all right, you can take your Suboxone or whatever. And I don't really agree with us paying for people to stay on Suboxone forever. I don't understand it exactly. I haven't been addicted to that, but they stay on it forever. It's like, I got buddies that went on there for five years. They're just gonna take in like two milligrams of Suboxone every day. It don't really make you high, they say. I have no idea, but still, just to be able to counsel to flip-flop that easy from all commercial, you had it made. You could do anything up through there. You could, you could've promoted some company to come in and make it all accessible to commercial right there at the interstate coming into Marion, but no. You stuck us a resident right in the middle and you didn't even think about it. You just, "Yeah, okay." Not, you didn't go to look at it. I don't think none of you, some of you weren't here, I'm sure, when they made the decision, but still, if you get a chance, go up there and look at our new drug rehab, or whatever you wanna call it. Does it have a name? I don't, who knows? They've changed it like three or four times. They really lied, I feel, to the town, but 'cause it was gonna be residential for anybody, but no, it's not for anybody. It's just for a certain, there's four single apartments with a tiny window and no porch, no yard. We thought that setbacks on R3, you had to have a yard, but these people don't have a yard. I, I don't know how the zoning or the, I don't know. It's just confusing to me that y'all would fall for this right in the middle of your commercial property, put in a, but if it's that easy to change, maybe we should all change ours to residential and really block it up through there to where it can never be touched and go back to commercial. So, but we all held off on going residential 'cause we thought the town had a plan, maybe, that they would come up through there, like I said, close Market Street, tear down some places, put in some nice entrance into Marion right there. I don't think y'all have a plan. I'm not really sure that they, why they annexed it. I have no idea. I mean, but if you get a chance, go south side sometime. We're about the only people south side of Marion. We're always kind of, our sewer runs over. You just keep adding on more lines. Sewer squirts up out of the ground. Been doing it for twenty years that I've been there. But now you've added on more and more. Just keep, but there is a project coming someday to redo the sewage down through there. But why you made it residential right in the middle of all that commercial? Look at the map sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we'll look into that. And next we have Glenn Robinson.
I'm going to yield my time. I think Mr. Parks, Mr. Stanford, Mr. Hayden, several of the others have, have said, anything I would say would be repeated. And, you know, I'll, I'll choose to keep my integrity tonight.
Thank you for yielding your time, sir. Our next, um, speaker will be Charles Wasson.
It's not fast.
And Charles passes. Okay. Yes, sir. We'll, uh, okay. That concludes public comment time. And now we will go with council members and their reports. And we'll go right down the line, the way it's written. Dr. Gates.
Uh, no report, Your Honor.
Okay. Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we send to the ordinance committee to update our codes we've adopted from the state, but I understand they haven't been reviewed in some time and they need to be updated.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, um, are you speaking of our entire code book?
Town code, yes.
Okay, uh, that's quite an endeavor.
Who, me? I'm sorry. I, I said I'm, we want to go to the ordinance committee to update our town codes. We've adopted the state of Virginia codes, but the town codes have not been updated on some things, and they need to be reviewed occasionally. It's been, how many years since it's been done, Mark? So it's time they are reviewed and updated.
Okay, I don't know exactly what that is going to look like, but we have a motion and a second to review our ordinances with the ordinance committee.
Our town codes.
Our town codes. Okay. So, um, that's a, that's a very non-specific, uh... Request, yes. Awesome, awesome task. But if the ordinance committee wants to look into that, then, um, I really don't understand. So you have a motion to update our, I, I really feel that, um, we have a motion and second, so we'll open the floor for discussion. Does anyone want to?
I'll let our attorney, uh, explain something. Explain something.
So, the town code is pretty extensive and will take... The town code is pretty extensive and it will take considerable amount of time to go through each section and get it updated so that it, that they correlate with the Virginia code and they cite the current Virginia code. The code changes from time to time, as has in this case. There was one that we discussed at the last council meeting that the code it referenced was repealed December of nineteen ninety-seven. So, um, it does need to be updated, but it'll take a considerable amount of time.
Basically, what you're saying is that we're, we are, all the things that the state has done over the last twenty years, we're updating our code that we're in compliance with what the state has said.
Yes, so we, each year...
If the changes, if the state made changes, that our code had something that wasn't in compliance with what the state now said, we're gonna bring that up to the state.
Correct. So each, we, we do it at the last meeting, July thirtieth or whatever date that, that meeting, excuse me, June thirtieth or whatever date that last meeting falls on, where we adopt the code of Virginia. So even though our code may be referencing something that is no longer in effect, we, we've taken care of it by adopting the state code. What is being asked is that we have it so that it correlates with the current state code.
And I think people are looking at the state code on our website and they're getting false information.
Well, there are some sections...
Yes. So I think periodically we do this and it's time, it's been twenty years since it's been done. It's time to do it.
But, uh, you know, some, some cases state code, uh, that never overrule local ordinances, I guess.
Well, there, there may be.
I think so.
It just, I'll just have to start at the first and start processing the way through it. Now, when we update ordinances, we have tried to have it so that it's referencing the current state code. So there are some that, that we've already done it, but we have not gone through each and every single town code section and done that.
Is it best to just do it in sections or?
Just start it, for me, I mean, it's gonna take an enormous amount of time.
Yeah.
For me, it's best to start at the beginning and work our way through it.
So, so Mark, do you think this is something that will be a year, two years?
Possible. It'll be at least a year, if not more.
We can, we can also discuss, uh, there are companies that up, that do this. You know, there are companies that will take your, your code and bring it up to state code for you. We might want to, if we see as a council, uh, ask to get estimates on doing that.
I think that's the way to go, because...
That'd take a lot of work off, Mark, and it would get it done quicker.
And then our ordinance committees have said, you know, too.
Of course. The ordinance committee would be in control of it.
So you're talking about?
A lot of committee meetings.
A lot of committee meetings.
Yes.
So actually, I think just get the companies to give us bids on it.
And also, there would be public hearings about the code changes. Is that correct?
Yes.
So that, that's gonna be a lot of public hearings. Is that gonna involve the planning commission?
No, I wouldn't think it would, Mark.
It, it wasn't after. The planning commission is advisory only. You don't have to refer anything.
So you don't have to refer those. So when the planning commission meets, um, that's, that's at the behest of council?
Yes.
Okay, so the planning commission doesn't have to meet?
They, they do not have to. Some matters get referred or there, there may be some issues that town employees want the planning commission to be an extra set of eyes to take a look at, and so meetings get set up that way.
But that's up to council whether to...
It's up to council.
Engage the planning commission.
There's planning commission.
Okay, let's send it to committee and...
We can, but any changes that would be made to our, uh, ordinances would be bringing them to the state ordinances.
Correct.
We would not be changing any ordinances other than being, having them been, being brought into compliance with state ordinances.
And that's...
So we're not changing anything.
And that's keeping the Dillon Rule in mind.
They're already in the, they're already in force. We just haven't said if something changed and we were behind the times, we need to get up to the times, and that's the state ordinance.
And then, and that's the municipal code that we have online?
That's correct.
So we, we gotta come into conformity with the states, what boils down.
Yeah, if things have changed and you don't know how much has changed and...
It's like the code of Virginia changes every year.
So we're not changing any ordinances. We're bringing them in compliance to the state.
Change union.
That was done in nineteen...
Codes.
Nineteen ninety-five by a company out of Florida.
Yeah, ninety-five or ninety-seven, I believe, something about...
I think if we're gonna do this, though, that we don't take the two-year route because by the time that we get done, part of it's gonna be time to do it again.
Be obsolete again?
Uh, let's, uh, let's get an estimate on what it's gonna cost us to do that. It might not be budgetarily possible at this point in time to do that. Also, it's gonna be, uh, an extra legal expense as well. So, um, we need to look at that in the ordinance committee. But we, we, we should probably discuss all this in committee. So, um, we have a motion and a second? Is that correct, Ms. Stanley?
Yes.
We're talking a lot here.
Yes.
So motion and second, and we've, we've had plenty of discussion. Anybody that wants to be in the, um, know on this can speak with the committee members. Shall we send it to committee? All in favor? All right. That will go to the ordinance committee. And is there anything else, Ms. Spencer?
No, thank you.
No, okay. Ms. Jennings is not here. And Councilman Atwill.
So we currently have a pending sanitation committee meeting. We haven't scheduled this committee, committee meeting yet due to Councilwoman Jennings' absence. As chairman of this committee, I want to ensure that all members will be present to discuss these matters at hand. And I would also like to address the fact that the current state of our meetings is not what I ran to be a part of. It is honestly embarrassing to me to be a part of how things have been going. I would like to encourage more professional behavior from elected officials, including myself and citizens alike. We are all selling ourselves short of our capabilities and potential as a council and a town in whole with the disrespect and arguing. While I think it is safe to say our entire panel welcomes constructive criticism, things have gotten a little bit out of hand. I think every individual involved in our town could improve on how we are conducting business and our conversations with each other. If we would all band together and work towards the same goal with each other, rather than tearing at the seams, fighting with each other because we cannot agree, we would be in much better shape. We all ultimately want Marion to be the best that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, sir?
Yes, sir. I spoke with, uh, Beth Ferris on the Melvapots Playground, and I don't know if everyone knows where the Melvapot Playground is, but it's, uh, up at the Marion Elementary School. And there's certain pieces of equipment that do need some work, and it's, it's for the children. Charlie was actually there as well. That total came to four thousand and sixty dollars. And I spoke to the mayor and I think we're gonna go ahead and fix that equipment so it's safe for the kids. That's it.
Good job. Good job. Anything further?
Just so you know, if you remember, we talked about a couple of other things that was discovered, so that dollar number went up just a little. But it's in the ballpark.
Right, right. That's, not, not anything we have to put out to bid. That's under our maintenance. So I believe we're okay there. Councilman Carter.
Deb and I attended Deborah and Henry's graduation, uh, this past Saturday. It's a higher ed center, uh, huge turnout, uh, went smooth. Gosh, I know, there's hundreds and some graduated, I think, in all the classes, MLE, PAs, OTs, occupational, I mean, physical therapy, and that's another one I can't remember. And then a new classes of OT and TT's have come in. Occupational therapy's down again enrollment, and that gives me pause because, uh, I think the reason is East Tennessee State's had started a program last year and other universities, so it's more competitive now, so, uh, but all's looking well.
All right. Anything else, sir?
No, not for me.
Councilmember Hayes, your next, okay, nothing. Okay. And, um, I have the mayor's report, and the first item on that is we need to approve the resolution for Marilyn and Gary Peacock on their sixtieth wedding anniversary. We will dispense with the reading of the resolution, as everyone here is already aware of it, and they are not present. So I need a motion to approve that resolution.
Make that motion. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of the resolution? Okay, so we have that, uh, resolution, which we'll get to at a later date. I have some notes here. I think it's on the back of one of these sheets, maybe.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to go ahead and sign that on?
Uh, we can do that in closed session. It's not a... We can do that in closed session, it's not a, not a big matter. Okay, from the mayor's report, had a great meeting with Hill Studios and the, don't take Ken Heath's thunder here, but the downtown and quite a few sessions with them, some walking tours, some ideas about maybe making Marion 2.0. Little bit of updates to the town, a little bit of updates. Ken, I'm stealing your thunder, but I was proud to be part of that. Went to the Chamber of Commerce board meeting. Again, we've got the town and county barbecue and meeting coming up on, I believe it's the fourth, am I right, is that, Mr. Carter?
I think so.
But I just wanted to give that mention. It's all in my notes here. You can see that the chamber makes a nice, thick packet with lots of pictures and everything else, and they spotlight a lot of their events, so it was a very good meeting with the chamber, and we've got things ongoing there. Went to the Spirit of Forty-Five meeting at the VFW, and that was this past Saturday, and that was very moving. And for those that aren't aware, that's the commemoration and memorial for W-2, World War II veterans. And since there are not many of those around anymore, they've kind of moved that to include the families, and actually, the spirit of unity, the way that America came together during that period of time with Rosie the Riveter, and, you know, a time when ladies moved into fields that were predominantly male to help with the war effort, to help with the rebuilding. So, the Spirit of Forty-Five still lives on, and the people that fought for our country and died, and the people that fought for our country and came home, were honored there and their families, and that's a very moving, very moving ceremony. Went to the board supervisors' meeting, and that was also a great meeting, but I'm not going to impact this meeting's length any longer by telling you more things that you can do in Marion. Chili cook-off coming up, but Ken's going to tell you about that a little bit later. And that concludes the mayor's report. Attorney's report?
One item, so, in the past, when ASCAP, which is a licensing entity, has submitted a bill to my address, I followed it up with a letter, but at this point, I believe it came to the town, not through me, but the ASCAP is one of three or four licensing entities, one of three licensing entities, and when we sponsor programs, we need to make certain that we're paying that licensing fee, and we pay it based upon the population. So, I'm not sure if that got into the bills.
Licensing fee for what bill?
ASCAP.
Yeah. You're talking about recordings?
Using music.
Music, okay.
I have that invoice on my desk, it did not get in these accounts we're approving tonight, because I was waiting on your typical letter that went with it, so, but we can process that.
Right, it wouldn't, since it didn't come to me, I wouldn't have followed up with the letter.
But the town is liable instead of the individual acts themselves, profaning the
When we're sponsoring it, we have to have, they may have to as well, but we definitely, so, Mr. Heath wants to
He'll expand, okay, okay, I just wanted clarification on that.
Larry, we're the town sponsor, we have to have the license, ASCAP BMI, CSAC, and those who are wanting to pay royalties for artists and performers and songwriters. Anything the town sponsors or co-sponsors is covering their license, everybody has to have it. We really had his Big Daddy Stone down here, if he can do the plane in the ceiling, he has to have a license as well, so it's state of business, we couldn't have those, if you are power company.
Good.
No other report.
Okay, thanks, sir. Cindy Stanley, Stafford Fords.
Yes, actually, I have several things this afternoon, something the mayor talked about, the town and country dinner. Had somebody at the chamber reach out, and want to make sure I remind you all of that. It is September 4th at 6:00 PM. If you would like to go, let me know, and I can get you registered.
Okay. It's a great event.
The second thing is, our next meeting is Labor Day, so you all would need to, I guess, make a motion to move that, reschedule that to another day.
Can we reschedule that for the Tuesday following?
Okay. Tuesday, September 2nd.
Custom Mary, that we do that?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to move the next meeting to the Tuesday after Labor Day.
What date on that?
Tuesday, the 2nd.
Tuesday, the 2nd.
Tuesday, the 2nd.
Make a motion, we move the regular scheduled meeting to September 2nd, same time, same place.
Second. And are we within the time period to do that? Is our
Yeah, I'll audit that advertised.
Okay, great, motion and second, all in favor?
And next, we continue to work with Mayor Cornet on his request, and the last thing is the accounts.
Okay, we need to put the accounts in line for payment. Are there any questions about accounts, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we set the accounts for payment.
Second.
Now, if there's any questions or concerns on any items that you see there?
Have we been reviewing the billings, Cindy, properly?
I believe so.
Preventive standard law that?
Give it just another second. And we'll move this to a vote, then. All in favor, paying the accounts? We will go forward with paying the accounts?
Thank you, that's all.
That's all, okay. Next, we have Chief Testerman.
I'd like to start off thanking Mr. Farmer for the beautiful flag dedication. I know Mr. Farmer, my entire life, really pushing up here on the racetrack, has always been a really good supporter of ours, and we appreciate it. We're in the hiring process, we're going to interview a few candidates tomorrow evening. Thursday, we have the lieutenant process going on to be writing an essay, and next Thursday, we'll be having scenario for lieutenant process. And also, next week, we'll, the week after, we'll be in Williamsburg, and I'm sure to be getting a ballot or something. The week after that, I'll be going over to the breaks with the cam and staff, and all the chiefs and sheriffs of Southwest Virginia, to be able to get together and have two good days of training, and get to know each other's ideas. That's pretty much all I have.
Excellent work in responding to a situation that was very critical. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, kid.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief Hamm?
Thank you, sir. I'll start with staff updates. We are in the process of finishing up two new part-time team members coming on board, they're in the final phases right now, we're excited about that. Just finished up today, actually, a grant package, the Virginia Fire Program for PPE or SEVAs. Going to get that mailed out tomorrow, as soon as I hear something on that, I'll report out on that. Also, just wanted to touch base, a couple of weeks ago, since we last met, we were all involved in a pretty high-profile town, here in the town area. We had a very solid unified demand at this event, including, we're pleased, part of Sheriff's Office, Fire EMS, and, and later, the Virginia State Police. Just great teamwork and coordination by everybody there, you as the council, and you as the citizens.
I should be very proud of your responders during that event. As far as our call totals go, we're around 240 calls, we're staying pretty average on our call totals this year. And in closing, I'd just like to say that this morning, a close friend of Marion Fire EMS, Mr. Douglas Testerman, passed away. Doug was a charter member of Sugar Grove Life Saving Crew, a member of Sugar Grove Fire Department, and worked with Marion Life Saving Crew, and often, when his health was good, you could find him down at Marion Fire EMS, too.
Who was that?
Mr. Douglas Testerman.
Yeah.
He dedicated about 40 years of service to the community, and I just wanted to take a minute to recognize him and ask that council and the citizens alike recognize Doug's family during this difficult time.
I agree.
You guys don't have any questions for me, that's all I've got.
Excellent job, thank you for the response to that situation.
Resty?
Thank you.
Resty, would you like to do a moment of silence in honor of him?
Sure, let's do that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Ken Heath, Economic Development.
I like you doing my report for me, Mayor, you did a fine job, I appreciate that.
Thank you, I think I left a few things out.
It's all right.
Will you flesh them in for me?
We'll get, just a couple of good ones. Next Friday, the 29th, at 11:00 AM, we're doing the ribbon cutting at Wendy City Dogs, it's across where Happy's used to be, so please come and have a hot dog and cut the ribbon with us. The other thing I have for business, I need your assistance with tonight, is our small business loan pool. As you guys know, we offer $15,000 at 2% interest, up to 60 months, for qualifying businesses in the town of Marion, for new and expanding businesses. The latest one we have come to us, this is all from USDA Rural Development, the latest one we have come to us is a business, Erin Thomas at Barrister's Deli and Sweets. She's opening up her business in, on South Commerce Street, 305 South Commerce Street, next to the Round Bank out there, so she's going to be doing some soups, some sandwiches, and some sweets, just in time after I lost all my weight, she's going to have all the good stuff to eat at that. Thank you so much, Erin. Matter of fact, we came down Saturday and got fudged, so we're good, Becky, I don't hear from you either. So, anyway, she's asked for a loan in the amount of $15,000. It has gone to the loan committee, it has been approved, comes to this council for your consideration, and hopefully, your approval as well.
I'll make a motion that we approve this loan?
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am.
Motion and second? All in favor?
Thank you very much, and she happens to be in the audience tonight, so she can tell you about the good stuff you got coming, you're opening up September?
September 1st.
September 1st, so, since we don't have a council meeting that night, we'll go have some sweets down there. So, I'll have your honor, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And Todd Long with zoning and property maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. At our last council meeting, you all authorized me to send out the void letters on the first offense of the sanitation ordinance that we done. I just want to let you know that we have sent those out. Got several calls, people thought it was a different one, we explained it to them, and they was all fine with it. I did send out the notice and the water bills, I think, went out the 15th, so that notice would come in there. In my letter, I did say that we would start back enforcing that, probably 10 to 15 days after that. So, around the 25th, somewhere around our 30th, maybe 1st of September, 2nd of September, 3rd of September, we're going to start going back to enforcing your ordinances. Also, at the last council meeting, council referred the livestock ordinance back to staff. After it was brought to our attention, that a resident sold goat milk soap at her farmer's market, and asked how that would affect her by passing the ordinance. The next day, I did find her address through the help of Leslie, who's the farmer's market staff member there, and I went out there, the lady who actually sells it was at work, however, her mother-in-law was sitting on a porch and I pulled up. I did introduce myself and told her what we were talking about, and trying to work out something reasonable, the way it works, and I hadn't got too much into my spiel in about two minutes, and the lady said, "We don't even have goats." So, they pretty much buy their goat milk from area or county farmers or Amazon. So, I just wanted to bring that back to you, that I did follow up on that, that's the information that she gave to me. I will do whatever council wants me to do, if they want me to continue working on this, whatever you all direct me to do, I will do. Also, last, Flav actually delivered a warrant to the magistrate office concerning 319 North Jones Street last Thursday, however, no court date has been set as the time of this meeting. So, once we get that court date, we will follow back up with council.
So, what do you want us to do on that? Go ahead and give the approval to proceed?
I mean, that's left up to council.
Well, it's, yeah, I think it's pretty clear-cut, no farm animals allowed, that's, and that was the only contention, is, it was brought up, is, you know, where the grandfather them in, well, if there's no goats exist, there's nothing to grandfather, so, there's no problem.
Do we have to have another public hearing?
No, we've already had the public hearing.
We already had it, yeah.
So, we can make a motion to accept that?
If that's your wishes.
I'll make that motion that we accept that ordinance as written.
Second.
And that is the ordinance not allowing
Farm animals within the town limits of Marion.
Do we have discussion?
So, are we grandfathering what people have in now?
There are.
If people has livestock currently, the way the intent behind that was, they could keep what they've got. We've already got ordinances on chicken, and we always, already said, talked about no swine, other than one pot-bellied pig as a pet. So, we've addressed some of it, but if you've got, say, goats now, you can keep your goats, but you couldn't allow them to multiply, or you can't replace them once they passed away.
So, for grandfathering it in, that part would not be a restriction? If we're going to grandfather, we can't say, "You got what you got, no more."
I didn't mention anything about grandfathering in my motion. That was brought up by a citizen at the last meeting, and Todd took it at her advisement, didn't he?
Mm-hmm.
And then he physically checked it out, and there was no goats. But my motion doesn't mention anything about grandfathering.
So, we basically have this motion before us because of a complaint that there was no goats.
Hmm, now what?
Well, you just said that there were no goats.
Well, we found out there were no goats. The citizen brought it up at the last meeting, that we were going to put a prospective business out of order, out of business.
Yes.
And Todd physically checked it, and there's no goats, they just mail-ordered them to Amazon or someplace.
And how many complaints did you receive about the goats?
We've had several complaints about the goats, I think the last one, if, and Flav is back here, I do think it was Walnut Street, maybe, Flav? I think it was Walnut Street, a lady come in probably about a month ago, that she had, that their neighbors had three or four, I think.
Those were verbal complaints, not written?
Verbal complaints. That's how we get most of our complaints, because people don't want to put their name on a piece of paper.
I think there might be something in the code about complaints need to be written.
So, we're not obligated to inspect verbal complaints, however, we do due diligence and try to inspect what people comes in. We have had people show up saying, not to council, but in our office, "Well, I told you about this, you didn't go look at it."
Okay. Well, we have
So, you don't know if there's goats on Walnut Street?
No, there are goats on Walnut Streets.
So, if we
You've got a few places you could sponsor goats around town. I think that's the confusion. We thought a lady was selling goat soap and making money by doing it, check that out, that was unfounded, then you start talking about grandfathering. Yeah, we've still got a few residents that's got, you know.
We're not going, if you've got goats currently, or anything, any livestock, we're not going to say, "Hey, you gotta get them out." "Hey, you gotta get them out."
But they're not allowed to multiply.
They're not allowed to multiply once they pass away.
You know, they're not going to live forever, so.
And that may be hard at least.
So nobody else will be in the future will be able to have them, so. Only the ones that's got them right now.
Well, I think like?
Todd, you, I'm sorry.
You go ahead.
You contacted a number of localities in our area, correct?
I did.
All of them have some type of animal ordinance, don't they?
They did. And most of it was restricted on amount of property.
Right.
I think, and I might, of course, this all goes back to the Planning Commission, back to February area, and then what, other stuff that I've researched, but I think the least was two acres.
Right. And that was for one?
One animal unit.
One animal unit, which is 250 pounds, correct?
No, it's 1,000 pounds is one animal unit.
Yeah, but a lot of those have one-fourth of an animal unit per acre.
Basically, if you had a quarter acre, you could have a quarter of an animal unit, which is 250 pounds, which would be one goat.
Big goat.
We went through this pretty extensively through the Planning Commission. And, you know, and I think I addressed this at the last meeting. Whenever it came up about food storage, the shelters for the animals, would it harbor rats? Keeping animal waste out of the waterways. There was a number of different things that come across the Planning Commission. And, you know, the grazable areas, how we was going to do that, the fence setbacks so the animal couldn't reach through to eat the neighbor's grass or so forth, or the flowers or whatever. We talked about all that during Planning Commission. And I think, you know, the consensus with the Planning Commission at the time was, you know, when Marion was first laid out, you could tell by evidence of 25-foot lots, we still have a lot of here now that was laid out for a residential community.
What is the mascot for the Marion Senior High School?
Goat.
Well, I think of? Used to be a goat back in our day, but I don't know. They don't use the goat no more, I don't think. I think of Dan Prater, and, you know, he owns land between Keller Lane and Chatham Hill Road, and he's got all that land. Will that decrease his land? But I mean, if he goes to sell his house as a farm?
Well, I can tell you right now, we don't have any property inside town of Marion that's zoned agricultural. You know, if you go to Whiffle, they got agricultural residential. We don't have that. We've only got 62 parcels inside town limits. That's one acre, one acre or more. Now, a lot of that is owned by industry and businesses or LLCs.
Yeah, I see what you mean. It could limit somebody's use. I mean, that would make it more difficult for them to have it zoned agricultural if they wanted to.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't exist now, doesn't it?
I don't think in 4.4 acres, what is the need to have something zoned agriculture? We're not 13 acres like Whiffle. I mean, 13 square miles. I don't know how big Abington is, but some of these places have rural farmland on it, some towns. And they've made accommodations. You know, the only thing I can see is if you, and I'm going to throw a wrench in it, is if you had in the ordinance something to a special use permit, if you met certain things, certain acreage, certain setbacks, certain whatever. If you were willing to meet that, then, and you had to keep complaint-free from neighbors. If the neighbors complained, then that was a cause to say, "I can't have that animal."
Well, we actually come up with, in the Planning Commission, what we felt like was a reasonable livestock ordinance, which limited the number of livestock you could have based upon how much property you've got. But the recommendation from Planning Commission to council was no livestock. But they're advisory only, so.
Right.
That's why I read that, was their recommendation, no livestock.
It is. It is. And, you know, if you want to accommodate somebody that's got one of the few people that have three acres and can put a fence around it and have the setbacks that all these other communities have. They have some places you can't be within 500 feet of another residence. I've read those. If we want to go through that, as a council, you need to decide that's what you want to do or just limit it to nothing.
Nothing.
You know?
I don't know many people want someone with half a dozen pigs next door or goats. I farmed all my life. They're nasty.
I think it would be, it would probably be just for goats.
I grew up on a farm, so I don't think anybody, I wouldn't want it.
But I don't think we have a problem with pig farmers in town.
Well, I'm just saying, it's a farm animal, Avery. And we, my motion was to say none.
Okay.
That's, I'm just clarifying.
Well, we have a motion in a second. We've had ample discussion, so I believe that we can bring this to a vote. And all in favor of the motion, please raise their hand. All in opposition to the motion, raise their hand. Motion passes. No goats.
You have it.
That's all I have, unless y'all got more other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Billy Hamm, Town Manager.
I'm going to give you some updates, mainly on Tony's projects. He plans tomorrow to start laying the sewer pipe for South Main down here where we've been filling in. He is planning to start laying pipe down there tomorrow to the road to a manhole. Circ, Phase 9 through 12 waterline, that's the projects that we've been working on down here in Cumberland Heights area. They've got all the main lines in. They've got all the tie-overs to the houses, all the hydrants. Everything's complete, but they still need to do some patching.
How many homes does that tell me about?
Phase 9 through 12, East Main project. All the main line and hydrants are installed. They still need to do the majority of the tie-overs. And I think they're patching it as they go, aren't they, on that? Yeah. Steel Park, Public Works Crew's been working on that on and off. They removed old fencing, cut down the necessary trees, and started to great work. We're in the process now of pricing the chain link fence that will go around it and fast fire for the quartz. Some of you may have noticed, we cut some bushes out front. That was talked about probably a couple of years ago, and it just never got off the ground. But we were trying to clean up the front of these two buildings, the OPD Art Gallery. And we took that row of some kind of bush, but it was like a row of brush. It was pretty rough-looking, but we took all that out and we put a wrought fence over the wall.
It looks nice.
It does look better than those old bushes did. But we're slowly working on that, too. We've struggled for the last year or two with our street sweeper, as you all know. A lot of you know. We bought a new one. It's here. We're waiting to schedule training on it before we get to see it out and about. But it's here. It's out to Town Shop. It's a Swartz vacuum-type sweeper. Our old three-wheel sweeper was mechanical. The difference is, the mechanical has a rotating broom under it. It picks up the dirt and throws it on a conveyor. That just goes around and around, picks it up, dumps it in the hopper. The vacuum type is just that. It vacuums. It's got gutter brooms, and it's got a vacuum in under it that sucks up the dirt, debris.
Is this brand-new or new to us?
Yep.
Do we already have a plan for the old one?
We, not yet, we don't. So.
Probably can't get parts or any more, can you, Tom?
No. It's larger.
And equated.
Over the years, you know, we've had both kinds here. We kind of lean more to liking the vacuum-type sweeper versus the mechanical. We like the vacuum a little bit better, but.
That's what a lot of big cities have got, too. Nashville's got a bunch of.
This is, I wouldn't call it the biggest, and it's not the smallest sweeper. It's kind of even medium-sized. But we're looking forward to getting it out and getting it going somewhere. It is at the Town Shop. If you want to go by and look at it, it's down at the Town Shop, just swing in there and check it out. That's about all I have to talk about, unless you have questions whatsoever.
I have a question. The road that we were looking at to make one-way, you know, where I'm talking about?
Gilman?
Yes, thank you. Have we done anything about that?
Gilman. No, we never did make a ruling on that. The original complaint, as I remember, correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, the original complaint was traffic coming from Chatham Hill was the issue. So we looked at it, making it one-way from Chilhigh Street. But if we do that, a lot of the residents is going to be real hard getting in their driveway.
And you don't like making it one-way the other way?
Well, that was, the original complaint was that, you know, people were taking, dodging the train, taking shortcuts. Yeah. So.
But the problem is that two people, if one's coming in one direction, one's the other direction. That was a big issue. I mean, there's no passing there.
But committee never did really make a, I don't think they ever made a final determination.
We didn't.
Yeah. So it, I mean, it sounded good on paper, but when you go look at it, it would, there's a couple of driveways there. It would have made it impossible without doing a lot of work, I think, so.
Yeah, the last time we spoke about it, there were a handful of driveways that were going to take significant work to get them out the other way. And I think it was really more money than what anybody thought we were going to get into to make that happen.
Market Street. The, you've got bids on Market Street?
Market Street.
Yeah, I did.
It's a done deal. It's, we're waiting on material.
Okay.
It'll be, as we said, I guess it's still on schedule for end of September, roughly.
Good deal.
Okay, so if that's the conclusion of your report, and no further questions, we'll move into closed session. And does anyone have the words to say to take us into closed session?
I make a motion we go into closed session. 2.2-3711A3 Real Estate, 2.2-3711A7 Legal, 2.2-3711A1 Personnel.
Second.
All right. And we will?
Vote.
Vote? All in favor of going into closed session? Okay?
It'll take about a?
Welcome back to the 2025 August 18th meeting of the Town Council. Is there any business to come before council?
I make a motion, we go out a closed session under 2.2-3712, A3 Real Estate. 2.2-3712, A7 Legal. 2.2-3712, A1 Personnel. And nothing was discussed other than those issues.
Coming out under 3712, but those three issues are the only thing that was discussed.
Yes, only thing that was discussed.
I second their motion.
Motion and second. Any discussion? None being heard. All in favor?
You have to do your calling.
Oh, yes.
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 I make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Discussion? None being heard. All in favor? We stand adjourned.